I'm now going to call the Board of Commissioners work session to order. It will take just a moment to get Tommy Lee phoned in. Okay, here's the number. He said try this one. Okay, great. Okay, so we're going to begin with the financial recap from April 2022 with our Finance Director, Aleisha Sarsay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. At the end of April, we ended up with $62,439,000 in revenue compared to April of '21 where we had $56,870,000. The $62 million is 102% of our budget, so we've already met our budgeted revenue. In not taking into consideration the amendment that we had discussed back at the other work session. Our expenditures were $47,895,000. That's 78% of our budget. And our fund balance was at $46,671,000. That fund balance declined about $1 million from March. So we're trending down in our fund balance and trending down in our cash. Our cash was $44,588,000. That's down about $1,575,000 from March. And we do have about $6 million of that committed to capital projects. So we really have about $38,588,000 available for operational spending at this point in time. Have any questions about that?
No, I think everything looks positive. We went over it a couple of weeks ago. It looks really good, so.
Are you projecting any of those expenditures on the current budget to come under as well? Or are you expecting that flat line out and then just the revenues are over?
I think we will be under budget, in particular in some of the salary lines. Because we had labor shortages in several departments, big like Fire was behind for a bit. I think they've gotten caught up on their headcount now. Sheriff's still down. CI is still down. So just about every department has had some open positions throughout the year. And so I do think that labor will probably not meet budget.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Aleisha. Okay, Commissioners, we're now going to move into the items for the meeting on Tuesday. Let me, at this point, tell you I've added a few things and I will remind you as we go along. There again, because of the timeliness of some of this, I am going to be adding a 10.2A. It's a natural gas supplies. And you do have that in some paper that Diane just gave you, so we will go over that. We just now got all the quotes back in because there again, the vendors we're working with are very short on staff too. So gathering this information has been taking a little bit of time. But also, we added it rather than waiting until July because some of these quotes are only for about a week or so. They're not 30, 60, or 90 day quotes. So we'll be adding that to the agenda. We'll be adding a 10.4A, which is a ladder truck that Chief Barnwell's here. And there again, you have those costs in the sheets of paper we just gave you. And then the other thing is we have added under 1115. We did just add the resolution, but you also have a copy of that. And we added the document from 11-9, Emergency Medical Services Agreement, a letter from Steve Adams. So we have all that and we'll go over it. And there again, if you're not comfortable with putting on a consent agenda, these things can wait till Tuesday. So at this point, I'll pull Aleisha back up here to go over our budget resolution and the budget amendment and the natural gas marketing and supplier costs. So we're at 10.1 right at this moment.
We have the budget resolution, which is the approval, the resolution to approve the FY 2023 budget. The total revenues projected on the budget for next year is $67,037,386. And appropriations are also estimated at that, so we're estimating the balanced budget. This is the budget that we've spent quite a bit of time on in our budget work sessions. I know we had, I think we had three of those where we reviewed most everything. So you should see the numbers consistent with what we discussed in those work sessions. So you'll be voting to approve that resolution. Then we have the budget amendment, which we discussed at the last budget work session too. The biggest part of this amendment would be the employee bonuses and the retention pay, which will total about $2.1 million. We do have some capital expenditures in this. We voted for a sound system for the chambers in here. An upgrade to our Manitron system at the Tax Commissioner office. New furnishings at Carroll County Mental Health. The repairs at the Billerica 800 megahertz tower. The $500,000 for the training driver course construction. That we will also joint with City of Carrollton on that. And then we had mowers, tractors, and a truck at the Parks Department. And we had money in there for the airport and libraries in this budget amendment. So this is consistent with what we had discussed earlier. So that will be for your vote to approve that. And then on the, on the gas, we had three quotes on that. We had True Natural Gas, Mansfield Power and Gas, and Walton Gas. The one-year fixed rate from True is .7950. From Mansfield is .7899. And from Walton is .8014. We also asked for a two-year rate. The two-year rate from True is .6830. The two-year rate for Mansfield is .6655. And the two-year rate from Walton is .6830. We did ask for some variable pricing. That would be a price that just floats as they buy each month. I think for right now, we'll probably be better off going with a fixed rate. Even though these rates are about 80% higher than what we're paying now. The natural gas market is going up, just like the gasoline market is going up. I don't know if we want to do a two-year lock on these rates. I don't have a very good feel for where we are. I think a one-year lock would be in our best interest to do that. If, you know, they're saying that the war in Russia is contributing to these price increases. So I don't know if going out two years would be better or not. I'd look for some direction on that. But we do need to make a decision on which one of these vendors. The True Natural Gas vendor is in Palmetta, but he is a member of the Carroll County Chamber. So he does have business interest in Carrollton. He comes to Carrollton on a very regular basis. So that's the, if we could call one of the vendors local, they also work with Carroll EMC. So just to note that with everybody.
Is True Natural Gas is our current provider too?
True Natural Gas is our current provider. That is correct.
How much, maybe you don't know, but I just wonder how much we might save going with the cheapest versus the next cheapest bid? With our overall annual purchases, I mean, would it be $200 or $20,000 or?
I didn't calculate it, but I would guess, you know, under $2,000 a year difference.
Okay. We have an idea what that total line item budget number is?
I do not. I can get that for you though.
Unless staff has a recommendation, and you may, I would probably like a little bit of time until Tuesday to help figure out before I can really say what is my consensus of where to go. Because like you said, there's a lot of moving parts there and nobody's going to have a crystal ball. But if we can understand some of the rates we're paying now, what our total line item budget is, and then try to, you know, compile and contrast some numbers there. Give me a better opportunity to know where I stand that I just don't know that I can give right this second.
I agree. The numbers are pretty fresh, so it would be good to have a few minutes to analyze it.
And what is the DDDC charge?
Those are charges that, for the pipeline. So the, we have a gas charge each month for our usage. And then we have to pay, our, Atlanta Gaslight owns the pipe. So they get a fee for the gas traveling through that pipe to the consumer. So that's the fee to use their pipe. And all of the resellers pass that on. We don't actually pay, we pay that directly to the gas vendor. And the gas vendor turns around and pays that back to Atlanta Gaslight, but they just pass those charges along to us.
Okay.
So prior to Tuesday, the commissioners would like to see, I guess, the difference, what the overall difference is between point seven nine five zero and point seven eight nine nine. So those are the two lower ones in the overall scheme of the whole budget. So whether it's two hundred, two thousand, or whatever that is, they would like to see that. And then Clint, what was your question again? What, what did you want to see?
Well, I think it's just a combination of that and then trying to sit down and do some calculations on subtracting out those numbers. Just some time to take the information you just mentioned and then be able to take some from this table and come up with some different scenarios from a, I'm looking at more of a total dollar figure than I am, I guess, just these independent numbers, because that's going to give me an idea of what the risk is. Do we want to take the risk of going to two years or do we want to stay at one year? That's going to depend on the total value.
Right. So the two-year price is going to be probably about thirty percent higher. And then the one-year rate's going to be about forty percent higher than we're paying right now. But I'll get the calculations together on what our total natural gas costs are for, for a year. And then we'll look at what the difference in these prices would cost.
Okay, good. So thank you, Philip. Back to ten point one, ten point two, ten point two A. Those will all be on Tuesday night. They will not be on consent.
And I read through those documents and they looked accurate to me. And any questions, I had legal counsel answered, so I'm good with those.
Okay, if you don't have any further questions for Alicia, I'm going to ask Charles and Danny to come up concerning some Public Works equipment purchases.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. We sent out RFPs on April twenty-fifth for three new compact skid loaders. And we, they all got all the bids back in on the ninth. We opened them, I think you have the price in there. Our two lowest bids were AgroAmerica at sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and Border Equipment at sixty-eight thousand eight fifty-three. There's a nine hundred and forty-seven dollar difference. We recommend going with AgroAmerica because they are close. And the Border Equipment is in southeast Atlanta. So in one trip, if we have to take it up there, that's, that nine hundred dollars is gone. And AgroAmerica attached a letter with theirs stating that during the two-year warranty, that if it goes down for any amount of time, we can pick a tractor up off their rental fleet and keep on working. We won't be down a tractor for an amount of time. So between me and Mr. Pope and Mr. Skipper, we all just think AgroAmerica would be the best way to go.
Any questions for Danny?
Mr. Yates, did you look at a possible extended warranty or have any type of analysis if you thought there was value in that?
I did, and the prices for them were pretty high. And we didn't feel like it was worth the extra cost. Because I think the AgroAmerica was at eight thousand dollars per unit for an additional two years.
Okay. I like the idea of what AgroAmerica has offered also on other RFPs that you just stated about being able to pick out something from their rental fleet.
Yes, sir.
I think that's extremely important. Time is more critical now than ever, not having the manpower throughout the country.
Yes, sir.
So any amount of time down, not having the equipment is a huge issue and a big asset for us to be able to go pick something else up. So I would be in agreement that that difference in the price is definitely made up through that offer for the warranty.
Yes, sir.
Are we good with putting this on a consent agenda?
Yeah.
Here.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. All right, we'll move to ten point four. We're going to bring Chief Barnwell up to discuss ten point four, fire rescue equipment purchase. And he'll go ahead and do ten point four A, another ladder truck, and ten point five, fire rescue equipment purchase.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Madam Chair. We have an opportunity to get into the fire truck business yet again. So the replacement trucks that we're talking about doing is in the SPOLOST schedule. The ladder truck, the first one, you said the two ladder trucks, I'm sorry. Which one's on your list?
Well, the first is the pumper.
The pumper.
And then the platform.
The, uh, SP seventy, okay. So the first engine that we have listed is for six hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars. From Sutton Corporation, it is to replace the one that we wrecked on May twelfth. That's a replacement engine for engine five. We do bring this before you, and this is for all the trucks. The prices are good until June fifth because they're having yet another four point five percent increase after that. Now, we did talk to them and say we're not being, we won't be able to vote on anything until the seventh. They advised if we had a PO on anything, we'll wait on the vote. If everything gets voted in or down or anything like that, anything gets voted down, they'll, they'll rip up the PO and we move on. So it's not a problem. So if you guys want to put on this consent agenda, and as long as they have a PO, before the fifth, they can honor these prices. So for the replacement of ladder six, that's the two thousand four SP seventy and stationed at station six. That truck is two thousand four model. We just put a good bit of money into it a couple of months ago. It's been very well taken care of, but it is in need of replacement. That truck right there will be one point three three million dollars. This is in year two of the SPOLOST schedule is where this truck would have been for the five-year SPOLOST schedule. Again, same PO, all that good stuff is there too. What we would do with the current truck that they have now, I would like to see how it is. Maybe get it refurbished for the cost of around three hundred thousand dollars down the line because we won't be able to get that truck in until eighteen to twenty months from now. So refurbish that truck and put it on frontline and probably put it in Battalion One, which is the Station Twelve or the Highway Five corridor in the southern end of the county. That way, we have that coverage ready for that part of the county as well. And we can stop, or we can reduce the use of ladder twenty-one out of the City of Carrollton. That way, we've got our ladder truck in that area and we're able to service our citizens with our ladder truck. Now, we will have to plan over the next eighteen to twenty months or however long before we put that truck in service to put nine people on it, three per shift. So that way, we have that extra manpower in that wide area with all those stations that takes a long time for stations to get to each other when we're going on fire calls. That would be ladder six. The replacement of ladder nine, that's something that came up kind of quick. That is the Villarica ladder truck and it is an SL one hundred. That is a dual-axle one hundred-foot ladder that would be able to reach all of the new development that they have going on up there. And it is at a cost of one point three seven seven, one million, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifteen cents. So it's a, current ladder nine is an SP seventy. That is the same truck we have in Bowden. It's a seventy-foot platform. That's the one with the bucket on the back. This will be just a straight stick. We would call them sticks in the business. It's a straight ladder. Okay, it is a mid-mount dual-axle with a fifteen-hundred gallon pump on it as well. That way, we can, you know, use it as a firefighting apparatus for that as well. The truck that we would have, the ladder truck that's in Villarica now at station nine is a twenty eighteen model. We would then transfer it to station fifteen or seven, somewhere on the north side of Carrollton. That way, we can service our citizens in the northern part, in that twenty-seven corridor there. So we can service those citizens the way we want to service the ones on the south side. And that way, we can stop ladder twenty-one from having to come up into that area by reducing these calls for Carrollton. One, we keep their units in service in their city like we should. We're trying to help them out. And it also reduces their response numbers into the county for us. And, you know, we, we can kind of save us a little bit of money on that end as well. Now, we would need nine people on that truck as well, so that they can respond and have those coverages as well. Now, the ISO ratings would, might be affected by that because I think the representative from ISO, he let me know that he was going to recommend three more ladder companies in our county. And I said, well, that's interesting. Because that's, the algorithms they use with call volume, everything else, that's what he says we need. If we hit two, we're going to be helping ourselves out greatly with that. So there's the three, the two ladder trucks and the replacement engine. And I'll be happy to answer any questions on that.
So ten point four, y'all have had that. We sent that earlier in the week. Ten point four A is the handout that we have in the stack of paper we just gave you. Comes with an email and comes with the price of the ladder truck that Chuck is referring to. And there again, all these were kind of scheduled over the next five years for SPOLOST. But we do have the SPOLOST funds. And the second thing is, it's taking two years to get things and the cost increase. That is why this is brought to you at the very last minute. We just had this discussion, what, first thing Tuesday morning? So that's why this is labeled ten point four A. So you're being asked for three fire trucks right this moment.
So the one point three seven is refurbished or a new?
The one point three seven is a brand-new truck.
Okay. And the one point three three is refurbished?
Yep.
Okay.
You're wondering the price difference, why are they so close?
Yeah.
I can tell you. So the ladder six with a platform, the bucket on the back of it, it takes a stronger ladder to hold it. So if you remember seeing them, you know, instead of just a ladder, there's a box under. It's three thousand Huck bolts holding this thing together. And it's, it's hooked on with a big yoke that they flow two turrets through. It puts a lot of, a lot of water through it. And it's, it's built a lot stronger. Now, when you put these trucks side by side, you had an opportunity to see them side by side. We had the SL one hundred demo at our training academy a few weeks ago. And they're not that much different in size. But the ladder, because it's a five-section ladder on the one hundred, it's a little bit shorter than the ladder's, the way the ladder is. But because that bucket hangs off the back of the truck on the seventy, that's what makes the truck longer. The compartment space is about a difference of about two or three hundred cubic inches. He told me that I, it's been a very busy week, as you can understand. So the, the compartment space is a little bit more on the SL one hundred. That way, it's not that much more material. And you've got two axles, there's, there's that little bit of money there. But your biggest cost difference is the ladder itself. Same pumps, the engines are the X twelve's up, or X fifteens, the Cummins X fifteens, the same engines. So it's just, you know, the gearing's a little different and stuff like that. So that's why the cost is so close, is because that SL seventy has the bigger beefier ladder because it holds more weight in that bucket. Now, why wouldn't we put a hundred in Bowden? They don't need it. I talked to the mayor Tuesday morning on a, on a multi-fire they had over there. Asked him if he had any big plans for any big buildings or any big industry coming in. And he said, nope, we do not.
I'm sure Villarica probably have to.
Sorry?
I'm sure Villarica probably able to pitch in on a one point three something million. The one thing that I would feel a little remiss without addressing, and you, you know, I, I support you guys. I mean, I'm way back in my earlier days, I was an EMT and got a nursing license and all that. But I, I, as a taxpayer, I just want to know kind of where we're at with training and these wrecks and that kind of thing. I feel a little obligated to, I mean, the last one, as you mentioned, happened right on, well, Stephen and I's road. And, and it really doesn't matter why it happened, like, I mean, whether it was speed or a road problem or I might was crawling up somebody's pant leg. I mean, it just, the, the point is, it happened and, and it's happened before. And I do want to act, I guess, in my role as an advocate for the taxpayer. And, and I mean, I, I view it kind of like my daughter, which, you know, when, between sixteen and twenty, she had several wrecks. And, and I got a point where Dad said, sorry, but I, I really can't pay for another car. So when you, when you see prices like this, I mean, I, again, I, I just feel remiss as an obligation to my fellow taxpayers to say, ah, here's another six hundred and thirty-three thousand. I, I would like to know what we have done to try to prevent these things. My suggestions off the record before were to say, hey, on county roads that are narrow like that, let's, I mean, we won't get there any faster really if, if our serving radius is five or six miles, which I believe it is, then, you know, if we go forty-five or seventy-five, it really won't make that much difference. But Cromwell Road, just as an example, I mean, it's, it's fairly narrow. And I would like to see us do something as far as limit the, the speed at which we drive. Don't know if that was a factor or not, but regardless. And other things that we might do to not have, or try to, in fact, more prevent these ultra-expensive wrecks. So if, if you could explain that, and I know we are very positive toward the new driver safety training course that the sheriff wants to put in and, and put training into. And are we going to participate in that and so on? So just a couple of questions for you to assure me that, oops, here's another car, just like my daughter. And, you know, I, I, I would feel remiss without doing it because I, I cringe at the thought of spending another six hundred and thirty-three thousand and one point three million and so on, and, and having these events occur.
Understood. So since, in three weeks since the wreck, one, you know, we've been double-checking on our guys. They're, they're getting better. The first thing that we did was, my deputy chief and I, Chief Wade, we started opening up our SOGs. What is our policy? Because when we first got here at the first of the year, we set a, a set of things that we wanted to address. Driving was one of them. We wanted to address staffing and officer training first. But staffing is, what everybody knows what staffing is. It's crazy, it's hard to get folks in. And officer training is just going to have to get pushed back because we just wrecked a five hundred thousand dollar truck. So driver training is now the first thing we're getting after now. And we've started doing things in this three weeks since, and we have a plan to go forward. I've got a list of things if you want to hear them. I'm more than happy to share them with you. So the first thing we did was, we planned an after-action review for the entire department. We were going to run everybody through a class of saying, okay, this is what happened. We go down and look at the wrecked truck at Public Works. And then we come back and we talk about it and talk about things that we've got planned for the department. We had to push that back to June first. We started yesterday. We've gotten four sessions in, had to stop today because we had another fire. We didn't start on the twenty-second because of a big, two big fires we had, so we just pushed everything back. But we're, we're working on it. And we're going to start back in the morning at Public Works and get that going. So that is the first thing that we did, along with, while we're planning on this, is looking at SOGs. We've, we've already met with Avery one time, spent an hour at, at my office, and talked about what are the things we can legally do with our SOGs. And he's given us good guidance on that. That's one of the things, that's another thing. We began the process of governing the speeds on all of our fire trucks. All but three of them because they run on the interstate. Currently, they're all governed at sixty-eight, well, not anymore. The three that are at Station Seven, Two, and Nine, they stay at sixty-eight. The rest of them are sitting at sixty now. So we've immediately governed all those back. They don't go past sixty anymore, except for those three that I mentioned. We had the camera initiative that we finally got going last month. And we were scheduling with Motorola when the wreck happened. And now we've got five of the ten cameras we have left are sitting on trucks now. Next week, we'll get the rest of them. And we've got one more that they found that we're going to put on another unit. So in all of our staff cars and five of our engines have cameras in them now, by the end of next week, they should all, except for the spares, have cameras in them. We're researching and, and trying to figure out a more robust camera system like this, the sheriff office uses. Right now, we have the small cameras with SD cards in them. And, you know, they're good. If we get in a wreck, you can pull the card and secure it and have it for evidence. But we would like a more robust, and we're going to research the cost of that. I think it costs about five thousand dollars for the system, and I'm not sure how much per camera. But we are looking into that and trying to figure out what can we do with that. We've got a meeting scheduled with Marsh McLennan to see what kind of online CE classes we can continue to do and push out to our field personnel and say, hey, guys, look at this this month, it's about do or garden. Look at this this month, it's about driver safety, you know, and everything else. And obviously, they're not tailored coming from Marsh McLennan to fire trucks or emergency responders. But that is an opportunity to keep it fresh on everybody's mind. Again, reviewing the standard operating guidelines, we've already changed three of them. And we're just getting ready to push those out in the future. That's what we're doing now. That's what we've already established. That's what we've already established and done in these three weeks. For the future, we're establishing apparatus review committee to make necessary changes to our training processes. That includes, because right now, we have a task book, we have people coming in, it's tied into their, I'm sorry, tied into their six-month period. If you don't get your driving done in six months that you're hired, you don't move past that. You stay on probation, your probationary period. We're getting rid of that. We're not going to rush people to drive these fire trucks when they're 19 years old and they've driven Honda Accords. That's out. So we're changing that policy. The apparatus review committee will say, "Okay, here's your task book. What we would like to see happen is say, this is their task book, this is what you do before you start class." Hopefully, by the time these changes are made, our driver training program, our driver training pad might be built. And if not, we'll just use parking lots that we can find and ask that we can use and try not to tear up in the asphalt. But in the meantime, that will be the starting point and then we're going to have a formalized class where you have a set number of hours pumping and a set number of hours driving. That's, you know, they've already done some non-emergency coach driving on the road. This will be cone course where they learn the truck, learn where the corners of the trucks are and that way, they get that eight hours a day of repetition because everything that we do is about reps. The more reps you get, the more second nature it is, it's like tying your shoe. So then they can learn those trucks a lot better. We're reviewing our response guidelines, which is, you know, what calls do we run emergency on? What calls do we not run emergency on? We were looking through them and we found a few already that were like, "We don't need to run lights and sirens at that call." So we're going to make a list and change all that up to where, you know, when, in the new CAD and the computers going in the trucks, once we get those computers, we can make sure that our people can say, "Okay, this is a 20-year-old that was bitten by a dog with no blood loss. I'm not going lights and sirens at that." Dispatch, we're going to downgrade to non-emergency and then they just go with traffic. Alarms, illegal burns, everything like that, that we're going to cut that out, run with traffic and we'll be fine. We don't have to hurry up and get to a majority of the calls that we're going to. We're researching, establishing feasibility of the quick-response vehicles. It's something that we've talked about for several of our areas, had a great conversation with several people in this room about those units. In the future, I'd like to see four or five of them in our county because it's a big county and we can let those things run medical calls, run non-emergency alarms, you know, and that way, they can get there a little quicker and stop all the other trucks from coming. We can run them first out on wrecks, but, you know, it just, we just have to study it and look at it and see what we can do. But along with the trucks that are cheaper, we can probably outfit them for about $65,000, $70,000, you know, for the truck and the equipment that we'd like to put on it, maybe a little more. We still need people on those trucks and we don't need to be piecemealing people off of certain engines to run those trucks and stuff like that because if, those trucks are going to not run that one area. They're going to run several areas, several station zones. So when we do that, you're going to say, okay, like if we put one at Station 12 in Lowell, it's going to run that whole Highway 5 corridor. If you put someone and take them off the engine and say, "All right, go on down the road and run that med call," and then fire comes in for a Lowell resident, they get one firefighter. It's not fair to them for that to happen. We got to put, if we're going to put trucks in service, we need to put people on. That way, we're serving our people to the best of our ability. So with that being said, the QRVs, they are very near in our future. I feel very confident about that. We've just got to find the people and fund the people, but getting those trucks online and getting them going is a fantastic idea. They can run a majority of med calls. I've seen it in the big departments firsthand. When you put those trucks in service, it'll cut an engine's response time, the two or three engines around them will cut their responses, not response times, their response numbers, in half to three-quarters. So those are very important that we really need to take a hard look at and especially in the next budget cycle next year because, I mean, obviously, personnel is at a premium so, and we have staffing issues currently that we got to fix first and then we have two stations that we still need to open. So with all that being said, I hope I may have answered one or two of your questions?
Let me add to that too. You talk about the driver training thing for the sheriff and this is a joint effort with the city of Carrollton and Carroll County and it is for Public Works to practice driving with their dump trucks. It is with the sheriff's department, is with the fire department. It is with any Carroll County employee that drives a vehicle. So this is not just the driving range we're talking about. Charles and Danny, Chuck, Chief of Police, Brad, all been in conversation in the last two weeks, I guess, since we started talking about this, as to what this is going to look like, how long it's going to be. So in answer to your question there, that is not just a sheriff's.
Right. Yeah. I talked with Brad about it, yeah, but, but we participate in it and that's good. And just, that sounds good. Thank you for addressing that. Makes me more comfortable. And as far as retaining staff, so that we do have a little older staff on the fire trucks, more experienced staff on the fire trucks, I guess we're headed in that direction and we're doing things in our budget to help you there. Hopefully, it's an offer.
We appreciate everything you give us. Everything you help us with, we appreciate it. We sure do.
Yeah, I know that's a factor too.
Yeah, it is. And that, you know, and getting those, letting those people become firefighters before making them drive those 36,000-pound trucks, half a million dollars a piece or more. You know, it's important that we set our people up for success.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Sure.
Chief, I apologize, I didn't have an opportunity to talk with you prior to the meeting, but I did speak with Ms. Blackman. The language in their proposal, I think it was just a typo. It does mention that it would need to be in before June the 5th, but then it goes on to talk about the P.O. or the contract to them prior to January the 6th. And I think that's just a typo.
It is. I think that's a changeover day. The 5th is the last day we can get it.
Okay.
And we vote on the 7th, so, I mean, and I explained that to them over the course of the last few days, so.
I was able to come out to the training station through the invitation that you had extended to the commissioners and was able to see the 100-foot stick ladder, as you're calling it. I was very impressed with the machine. One, a couple of things that I picked up on about that, one of the main things that I liked was through your administration that it explained this, while the bucket on the end certainly has its advantages in certain areas, when you're talking about servicing a more populated area, the ability, for instance, if you have a fire, if you're in a less populated area and you've only got three or four people, maybe you're trying to rescue from the top, you can put them in the bucket and then you bring them down. You go to an apartment complex and you're trying to rescue 100 people, you can't put 100 people in that bucket and then let them down. You've got to let a few down at a time. So the stick gives you the ability to go up to an area and have continual flow of rescuing people that you would typically expect in a larger city with high-rise buildings. The other thing that I think is important through your administration that has explained to me, the additional footage is not necessarily just meeting the height of the building. If you have a building that has shrubbery or if it has some kind of deterrence to keep vehicles from getting too close to the building with safety issues, that may be additional footage that you're trying to make up as well. So I think the idea behind that larger ladder is definitely needed. With regards to Villa Rica, I know there's a lot of discussion about the TAD, what will those negotiations end up looking like, but to me, outside of that, we still have an obligation to provide for the citizens in Villa Rica. They are still our taxpayers, they are still Carroll Countyans. And so for me, knowing that this is two years out, I feel very strongly that this is something that we need to order because that is definitely going to be at the demand there. And I think that we have other avenues to continue working with the city of Villa Rica outside of the TAD as far as revenue streams, to assist the fire department in Carroll County, to ensure that we can continue providing top-notch service there in the city as it continues to grow. So this is not a sticking point for me, particularly with negotiations. Looking at the money that we're saving, if you're just taking the 4.5% that they have discussed in their proposal, times the 1.37 million straight truck, ladder, stick truck, you're looking at $62,000 in savings just by ordering now. And it's my understanding that we would be able to pay for that down the road once that's delivered. I know Ms. Cersey and the Board of Commissioners is continuing to look at ways to hopefully increase interest revenues or investment opportunities, so to be able to have that money sitting there, we also may have the opportunity to make a little bit of money off of not having to pay it right now and being able to keep it for two years. So just looking at those two components alone, to me, makes good financial sense to try to put in the order for that particular truck as well. So obviously, I'm for the first two, I'm for all three, but I think the third one definitely necessitated some conversation and just as the district commissioner for that area, the TAD aside, the city continuing to grow, a lot of the things going on there, industry that's going to come in and pay taxes, other individuals that are going to continue to pay taxes. I think we have an obligation to ensure we are prepared for that because we are providing the fire service and knowing that that truck is two years out, I don't think now is the time to sit and wait and then try to order something and then pay more and then wait another two years. So I feel very strongly and I hope the Board of Commissioners will take in consideration of funding that third truck.
Right. One of the things I probably missed when I was talking was that the replacement for ladder nine was in five, the fifth year of the SPOLOST that was designed or that was put together in 2019. So it was well before the TAD and all this other stuff that started happening, that this schedule that we're following, it just, two years out, you know, it's 16, 18 to 20 months on ladder trucks, 22, 24 months on engines, and they just keep ticking a little bit longer every time we, you know, another month rolls around. But yeah, it was already in the SPOLOST schedule, so that's why, you know.
And to, and I would like to add another comment based off of Commissioner Reynolds' comments about him wanting to continue to see improvements in training and so forth. I was over at Public Works today, something totally separate to have a meeting about one of the agenda items and I know your deputy chief Wade was there conducting some classes and I just kind of popped in and sat for 10 or 15 minutes and I think he did an excellent job of going over the PowerPoint information and what I saw, that the firefighters were very engaged in the conversation. I didn't pick up on everything that they were going on because I'd come in in the middle of his presentation, but they were engaged. The deputy chief did an excellent job of explaining. He listened, had a lot of care about their concerns and conversations and I saw a very cohesive team trying to work together to learn and educate. So just, that was not a plan that I happened to be invited to, I just happened to be over there and something was going on. So I hope that gives you, to your point, Commissioner, a little bit of reassurances that the department is definitely doing what they can.
I would extend that invitation to all of you. As we're having these classes, I can let you know tomorrow morning when the next ones are and, because they're going to continue. Because as calls come in, we can't have them, you know, we have to be very fluid with our teaching schedule as we can see in the last two weeks, but we'll extend the invitation to all of you and you're more than welcome to join us at any time for anything we do, especially for this because I know it's a major concern. And it was for us too. Even months before this thing happened, this was one of the things that we were very concerned about. So we've been watching it and it just, it's, I don't like the fact that we had to push it to the front because of how we did, but here we are, our guys are okay, we're going to move forward.
Chuck, would you like to review 10.5 now? It's the equipment purchase of $31,102.40 for the 140 combat sniper hoses.
Yes. Okay. So the hose is the inch-and-three-quarter attack hoses that we have about 100 and something sections that are 20 years old or more. And, you know, we just, we test it every year, it's still passing, but it is 20 years old, so it's time to replace it and we need to go ahead and do that. We did, this was in the budget amendment in April and we asked for 150, but because costs keep going up, we shed that down to 140 so we could meet our budget. We didn't want to ask for more, but we want to meet that budget and we can make do with the 140 sections. We did have several quotes come in, several, we actually put our hands on several pieces of hose from different places and were able to choose this one from 10-8. It's one of our vendors and that's it, $31,000 and change and 140 sections. And we would keep the ones that we have for training, put them at training, we said, "We're still going to use it, we're just not going to throw it away," so.
So Commissioners, are you good with putting these three fire trucks and the hoses on a consent agenda for Tuesday?
Here.
Okay. Thank you, Tommy. Okay.
I do have one question.
Oh, sure, sorry.
I couldn't get in there. The Engine 5, I know, I noticed there's an engine there, is that, where did that engine?
That's one of our reserve engines. You know, we have four, we had five, we have four now because that's a first-out engine now. That's a reserve engine that we had and we put, you know, put some more equipment on it and put in service. It's full-time.
Okay.
It's one of our older engines, you know, and we've had these conversations several times about how well our fleet maintenance division takes care of our trucks and we're so proud of that and we were able to just put that truck up that day. So Carrollton helped us out for a little bit while we got it ready and we found people to put on it and put it in service that day.
Well, the truck that was wrecked, was it an 18? Is that, what was that?
That was a 17? 17.
So...
2017.
Was it, how long do we normally, when was it scheduled to be replaced?
Oh, it was going to be way down the line.
Way down the line.
Yeah, because it was a good truck at Station 5 and what, Eric, how many miles? So it only had 45,000 miles on it, so we were going to keep it down there for a minute.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Chuck.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we're going to move on to 10.6. I'll bring the finance director, Alicia, back up to talk about our investment agreements. If y'all remember, last Wednesday when we were having our third budget work session, Gabe Aiken from Raymond James came and spoke to us about this, so Alicia actually has the details that are attached to the agenda.
We're proposing signing an engagement letter with Raymond James where they would represent us to sell or for us to buy a portfolio of U.S. Treasuries that would be laddered out from three months out to either a year or two years. We would use the bond money that we have currently sitting in Georgia Fund 1. It's drawing about 0.12% interest. I looked at the rates today on a U.S. Treasury, a three-month U.S. Treasury, right now is at 1.13. I think that with that laddered portfolio, that we could get close to 2% interest so we could get a considerable amount more of interest than we're getting right now. We also want to be very careful and mindful of our cash flow needs as we move forward. We're building the fire station in Villa Rica and starting to begin work on the administration building. We do want to make sure that we have cash available, so that's why we're going with this laddered portfolio. I don't have the cash flow worked out exactly at this point, but I do know that we would be able, when we're only in the planning stages of both of these, we're at least six months out before breaking ground, so I know we could put some money on, to use in these markets for at least six months. We just heard that the fire trucks are taking 24 months, so we know we could put that money on the side for at least 18 months. So we're proposing that we sign this engagement letter with Raymond James so we can move forward with doing these U.S. Treasury investments and getting more return on our money.
And that $39,000 fee, is that annually or...
It's a one-time fee of, so they will place this whole, we'll come up with the structure on the investment of how much money we want to put into three months, six months, nine months, 12 months, 18 months, and maybe some in two years. I'm not sure that we really want to go out that far at this point until I get the cash flow projections done, but it'll be a one-time fee for putting this together and putting it out for bid and the company that sells us the Treasuries will actually pay that fee.
Okay.
I reviewed the document and spoke with Ms. Blackman and all my questions were answered. Thank you.
Are you good with putting us on a consent agenda for Tuesday night?
Yep.
Here.
Great. Thank you, Tommy. Okay, we're now going to move into 10.7 and 10.8 with the county attorney, Stacy Blackman, for our library MOU. MOUs with an S.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. We have for you two library MOUs. These are similar to what we've done in the past and at your budget work sessions, you've approved, discussed the amounts. And so the first one, 10.7, is just a one-time payment for capital outlay expenses and those are to go to the facilities described on Exhibit A discussed at your budget work session. And then the second one is MOU that we've entered into is for the annual $250,000 amount and we've used the same proration in the chart on Page 2 that we've used in previous years. And the only thing we've added at the end of Section 4 that was a little different is that in the event a facility is closed or drops to a lower classification of a library service outlet, and that's a defined term with the state library system, due to the reduction in funding by the city in which the facility is located... Due to the reduction in funding by the city in which the facility is located. Then the county shall no longer be obligated to provide the funds allocated for that facility as described in Section Two. And that's because the Board of Regents rules, we have to keep our, that maintenance of effort where the local funding is supposed to stay the same.
Any questions for Stacy?
Not a question. I just want, on the record, I did speak with Stephen Howser and I asked him about the, uh, Whitesburg. As far as the first repairs thing. And he was to get with us if there were any additions there. So evidently he didn't. So that's good.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Are we good with putting both of these library MOUs on a consent agenda for Tuesday?
Yes. Yeah.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move into the business session now at this point. A lot of it's just some appointments. The first one being the Library Board appointment. Denise Askin, who is at for renewal, has been serving many years and has done a wonderful job for all of us. At this time does not wish to be reappointed. I believe Clint, you had mentioned somebody?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Nancy Memes.
If there's no further appointments or nominations, are we good with putting Dr. Nancy Memes on the consent agenda? To be our appointment to the Carroll County Library Board?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, the Carroll County Development Authority, this is for District Five. Commissioner Reynolds, do you have a nominee?
Yes, I was sorry to hear that Tori Ertur cannot continue. I really appreciated her doing that for the time she did it. I did speak with Donna Lackey. She, of course, has, as we all know, extensive background on this kind of thing. So she was excited about serving and I spoke with Avery about that. And I think she will look forward to that. That's who I'd like to nominate.
Are we good with putting Donna Lackey on a consent agenda for the Development Authority representing District Five?
Yes.
Here.
Okay, Region Four, the EMS Council. Let me get my notes here because it was several. So Chief Jimmy Bearden from the City of Carrollton has retired. And reaching out to Chief Barnwell, Tim Paget, nine-one-one. They recommend that we appoint Chief Alan English, who is the now Chief of Police for Carrollton City to take Jimmy's position. And then Nick Turners does expire six-twenty-two. And Chief Chuck Barnwell has agreed to step in to represent the Carroll County Fire Rescue on this one. Are y'all good with appointing those two expired appointments to put on a consent agenda? Okay, great. Thank you.
Here.
The Carroll County Board of Family and Children's Services, we have the opportunity to reappoint Pastor Vincent Dorch. The DFACS Board has requested that we reappoint him and he is willing to serve again. Are we good with putting Pastor Dorch on a consent agenda for this?
Yes.
Okay, eleven point five is the Pathway Center Community Service Board. We have appointed Jody Goodman, who represents us for mental health. She has agreed to be reappointed. Are y'all good with putting her reappointment on the consent agenda for Tuesday? Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call the County Attorney, Stacy Blackman, back up to eleven point six, our inmate work detail agreement with the City of Carrollton.
Thank you. This is a proposed agreement with the City of Carrollton that, similar to the ones we've had in the past. And it's just for one crew, which would have a minimum of five inmates with a cert, certified correctional officer. And the work would be for the City of Carrollton, the Green Belt and City Streets. And the proposed term for this would be three years, but either party could terminate for convenience. And there's a force majeure clause that for events beyond a party's control. That, and also the providing the inmates would be subject to availability of the inmates and the CO in here. So the payment is what's being currently paid, I believe, and it's fifteen thousand, five hundred per quarter, per CO. The city would also pay any overtime and any increase in compensation or benefits.
I know that we have restructured some areas where we've had some labor shortages in not having enough CO officers. Both in the park system and in public works. And we redirected and added some staffing there. I think that that definitely needs an opportunity to see how that works out for us. And I think it will definitely improve. I have residents that use the Green Belt that come to Carrollton. So I have no problem in the sense that we're utilizing this for a very important reason. A lot of people converge here in this area, things that they would be cleaning up and doing. I do have a little bit of heartburn about making it a three-year commitment. I think the labor pool is so tight throughout the nation. And I do know that there is the clause in there that we could terminate within ninety days. But the only amendment I would ask for the Board to consider is for us to just to do a one-year term commitment. And then us revisit it each year. So that would be the only thing that I would suggest.
I echo the staffing concerns because I, when I was reading this, I'm like, okay, I mean, it's great. And we would like to continue and Carrollton cooperates with us extensively. And I really appreciate that. But I do think about the county not having enough inmates to do what we need, including litter pickup and so on. And possibly just, just doing the one year also because the things are so tight. The other thing I wondered is, should we update the CO reimbursement amount? I mean, I don't know how long that's been there at that rate, but rates are going up and our expenses increase. And is it time to adjust that?
I think that had been adjusted and to, that is the current compensation. Is that correct? Yes. So that has been updated recently.
Okay, good. Okay.
So are y'all good with putting us on a consent agenda, changing the contract from a three-year term to a one-year term?
Yes. Yeah.
Here.
Okay, great. Stacy, we'll make that change.
I'll make that change.
Great, thank you. All right, next you have is eleven point seven is the Fire Service Agreement with the City of Carrollton.
Yes, this is, I think Mr. Theron Gay has mentioned this at some of our budget work sessions. So this is an amount that's, that's in this agreement, has been discussed previously. So we want to document that formula if you agree with it. And what we did was use the older intergovernmental agreement, which has been adjusted with the Service Delivery Agreement over the years. So the main change is to Section Six A on the last page. And what we have is a formula which for the first year calculates to one million, two sixty-two, one seventy. For the City of Carrollton to answer the calls within the designated area of the unincorporated portion of Carroll County. For the fire calls. And Chief Barnwell correctly pointed out that we needed to add a clause to not include calls where, that are canceled. And they don't arrive on the scene. So we've added that language. And so we, the city said that they've answered nineteen, nineteen percent of the calls they responded to. Were within the unincorporated area that's designated on the map. And so taking that and multiplying it by their budget, that's where we come up with that one million, two millions, one point two six two, one seven oh number. And so this agreement provides that we'd adjust that number annually. And we do have in brackets, some of the equipment that's provided, we'll get the city to make sure we get that up to date.
I think it's a, a good formula that because it does, the dollar is tied to the actual response. Great idea too, from Chief Barnwell about taking out those calls that they don't actually go to. Does our EMS services have data on that so they can, data-wise, adjust that down?
We did check with Mr. Patterson with the nine-one-one department. They don't have like an automatic way to track it currently. Because I don't know that they're tracking all of Carrollton's calls and they're in the city limits. But they said they would work on a way, it may have to be manual, but at this point, but we'll, they're going to work on that. But they did, Chief Barnwell thought this was the nineteen percent, I believe, sounded with, correct, within the correct range.
Okay.
Are you good with putting us on a consent agenda for Tuesday night? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm now going to call for eleven point eight. Hubert Sparks, our Chief Tax Appraiser, is going to come forward about an agreement. For appraisal services for residential property.
Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to come before you today. Before we talk about the contract itself, let me give you just a little bit of background info, just to share with you how we got to this point. In the Assessors Office, just like many of the other departments, we've had some staff shortages as well. The problem that we run into is we still have statutory requirements that must be met. So around the first of the year, the Board of Assessors began looking at some alternative solutions, you know, to try to compensate for this. So in March of this year, the Board of Assessors issued an RFP. And in that RFP, basically what they said is we're looking for field work to be conducted. Price on these things, basically between nine thousand and ninety-five hundred parcels for the next year. We had three vendors that responded. We were very excited about that. The first vendor before the deadline came back and said, that was McCormick Solutions, by the way. They came back and said, hey, we're short-staffed as well. We're not going to be able to complete the task as defined. So we're going to opt out at this point. The second vendor, which was GMAS, they sent us over a price quote. It was thirty-six dollars for a full appraisal and twenty-two dollars for a limited appraisal. Let me define the differences between the full and the limited. A full appraisal means this is a property that we have not looked at in the past three years. Which requires a full walk-around, a full thorough appraisal. The limited appraisal is only, those are ones that were defined as something that we had looked at in the past twelve months on staff, in-house. And what we would need to do is update our photos, just like we would ever property, you know, in the similar area that we were looking at. So the price on those is twenty, or I'm sorry, thirty-six dollars for full, twenty-two dollars for limited. Right before the deadline, GMAS contacted me back and said, hey, look, you know, we're kind of limited too as far as staff. We can't guarantee that we can get all the work done either. So we want to put that out there. We feel like we can get half or better done. But we really don't know right now. The third company that reached out was Technical Appraisal Services of Georgia Incorporated. They gave us a price quote. It was twenty dollars for a full appraisal. It was twelve dollars for a limited appraisal. And then they charged two dollars per parcel for data entry. The two dollars per parcel was included in the fee for the previous vendor. They guaranteed us that they could complete the task. I submitted those, that information to the Board of Assessors in the April meeting. And they gave me the authority to work with the County Attorney to try to come up with, you know, possibilities of contractual information. I will commend Ms. Blackman for a wonderful job in helping put together the contract that you have in front of you. Some concerns that I had in the contract itself that Ms. Blackman was able to help me work through. Quality control issues and auditing of the work that was to be done. There was a couple of things that we addressed in the contract that I think maybe satisfies those requirements. The first thing was we required resumes from every person that they were going to send to our county to do work. The Board of Assessors then would have the authority to say, no, this person is not qualified or no, we don't want these people. Also, the Board of Assessors, one of the things we wanted to do as far as quality control goes. We wanted the ability to look at a certain percentage of the work that was completed to make sure that they were doing the work the way we would do it if we did it in-house. The Board of Assessors basically has the final authority here. We didn't basically confine ourselves to what percentage that we would audit in the contractual agreement. But what we did say, Board of Assessors has final authority on approving the work to be paid for. So I think we addressed that. One of the other concerns I had, you know, they guaranteed us that they could complete this work. So, you know, I wanted something in the contract about that. So what we did was we went through and we set deadlines throughout the year in the contract for completion percentages. So that, you know, they don't wait too long before they complete the task. They have deadlines that they have to meet, dates they have to meet. And then once again, I think Ms. Blackman could probably address that if somebody's got additional questions about it. But there, there could be some recourse at that point in time if they did not perform. The third thing that I thought was very important was they gave us a very good price quote on this. And, and I wanted to, you know, make sure that we could lock in this price. So we got a guarantee of the price for one year. In the contract itself, it says that we have an option for an additional year or up to two years if need be at the exact same price. So there's no price increase there. I thought that was very important. Technical Appraisal Services, they reviewed this contract after we got it, the way we thought we wanted it. They approved it on the twentieth of last month. It went before the Board of Assessors on the twenty-fourth of last month. And the Board of Assessors then approved the contract. And I'm here today to ask if you would do the same, or at least consider such. Questions?
Hubert, I know we've talked and I appreciate you going over some things with me. And thanks to Stacy too for working with you on the QC and penalties and so on. Would you mind maybe going over some of the checks that you did as far as references and that kind of thing? And, and then I have one question, which I didn't think about before, sorry about that. But attendance at any subsequent BOE hearings and that kind of thing, would, would these staff or some representative be there for you? Or is that necessary or what?
Let me see if I can answer the first question. The first question was concerning references. So the company sent over four pages of counties in the state of Georgia. Where they have either previously done work or they're currently doing work. I picked out a dozen of those at random to contact to check their references. Out of the dozen that I contacted, I got nine responses back and all nine responses were positive responses. In fact, I probably learned more about the history of the company. One county had been doing business with them since sometime in the nineties. So this company's been around for quite an extensive period of time. I also found out that the owner of the company was, you know, someone who worked at the Department of Audits at some point in time. I didn't previously know that. So, so I learned a lot about them there. I, I think it's a very reputable and a good company. I feel very comfortable with them based on checking their references. I'm sorry, what was the second question?
BOE hearings, attendance at that if necessary and all that.
So in the, so in the contract itself, what they're, what they're limited to doing is just conducting the field work. The Board of Equalization hearings, any appeal process, that would still be available the same as it would always be. And those would be handled in-house.
Okay. Well, and I appreciate you, your customer service orientation, I mean, and, and discipline toward that. And I think it has, I know it has, cut down on, on that. So thank you. That probably won't be a critical factor. I just wanted to ask.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Mr. Sparks, to summarize some of this, even though the Board has made some investments on behalf of your Tax Assessors Office. For technology, fly-overs and different things, those only assist to a certain point. So state statute requires that every three years, you're technically supposed to physically touch each parcel. And so that's why this component is so critical. Is that correct?
That is one hundred percent accurate.
Okay. And I like the quality control aspects that you put. You and I had also spoken as well. Like the idea you can do random audits or have different things where you can try to keep a control on that. And then the point you just brought out about, I think it's very important that all the citizens understand. They are not negating any of their rights as far as an appeal process and so forth. This is simply just a middle person to help with the field work because you're lacking in labor.
That is correct.
Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions, are you good with putting us on a consent agenda for Tuesday?
Yeah.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hubert. Okay, we're going to move to eleven nine. It's the Emergency Medical Service Agreement with West Georgia Ambulance. We've discussed this several times at several of our work retreat and our budget meetings. You have the attachment. Are there any questions concerning the agreement with West Georgia Ambulance?
No, and I want to thank the Chairman and also thank Mr. Theron Gay, who consulted and helped negotiate as well. I think we got that amount to a reasonable amount. We understand that prices are going up and labor costs and equipment and everything. And we want to definitely make sure that our citizens are taken care of and having these ambulances in the zones and being able to properly respond. So I think there's some good things in the document also about some accountability, ensuring where these vehicles are at at all times. And our nine-one-one center being able to track that. So thank also Ms. Blackman for the work that they did. I feel good about the agreement that was reached and the terms in the contract.
Are we good with this on a consent agenda?
Here.
You also have received a letter that was sent to me from Steve Adams. And we will have a letter drafted for Tuesday for y'all to approve at the meeting. Is that, okay, with you Stacy, or do you want it approved in this? you, Stacy, or do you want it approved in this?
The agenda item includes the proposed assignment, and the letter that we received today has the
Would work with that?
Yes.
Okay, so Commissioners, do you want to take just a moment to read that letter that was sent in the pile of paper we just gave you? And if you're good with that, I'll go ahead and continue on with that. We won't put on
We would just add to this agenda item the name of the entity.
Gotcha. I'll give you just a second to read it. So are we good with putting eleven point nine on the consent agenda, adding to it the
The name of the Health Lion entity.
Yeah, Health Lion. Are y'all good with adding that into the consent agenda?
As long as the chairman and the legal counsel feels confident about that, I am.
Great. All right, thank you. All right, eleven ten, eleven eleven, solid waste. We are going to remove, or I'm going to remove this, or I'm asking, we will all remove it for, and we'll put it on the future agenda. Jaclyn has been working diligently. I believe you saw the email that had these attachments on it, but these are not finalized yet, so we'll deal with them at a future meeting. So we'll remove eleven ten and eleven eleven. Now we'll go to eleven twelve, which is our transit contract renewal for FY twenty-two, twenty-three, very standard from every year. And I'll bring the attorney, Stacy Blackman, back up for that.
This is the same contract that we've seen in the past with a couple of changes. And there's a nice memo from Tommy Kennedy with Ree Rivers explaining that there are two different grant sources now for the program because of the census results. Before, we had solely rural grant funds available. Now we have other grant funds needed for dense population areas. And so with that, the other changes that our local contribution is seventy thousand a year. You've probably noticed in Mr. Kennedy's memo that the last two years, we agreed to that amount as well, but they didn't charge us for it because they had some other funding sources. So, and I think he has in his memo, like, the total program budget's like four hundred and fifty thousand. So that agreement otherwise is the same.
Are we good with putting this on a consent agenda? Great, thank you. Eleven thirteen, eleven fourteen, we will deal with on Tuesday. We will now go to eleven fifteen, licensing and regulation of special event facilities. And I will call Avery Jackson, the county attorney. We also have Ben Skipper with Community Development here if we have questions for Ben.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. We have before you for your consideration an ordinance to regulate special event facilities. It's a licensing ordinance where they would be required to fill out a detailed application, pay a licensing fee. There'd be inspection requirements that are required, and a permit would be issued. And then if there are violations of the facility, either of the county codes, noise ordinances, or other requirements, then there's a mechanism to then pull their permits so that they could not continue to operate. This is very similar to the Airbnb or the short-term rental ordinance that y'all might recall that we did last year. Community development at that time was getting a lot of complaints about Airbnbs and the noises and the nuisances caused by the neighbors. And so we developed a licensing ordinance for the Airbnbs, and this models that. A similar thing is happening where community development is getting a number of complaints, noise complaints, traffic issues, just general nuisance concerns of neighbors of the special event venues that are operating throughout the county. And so just like the Airbnb short-term rentals that we did last year, we'd like to do a very similar thing. And we just modeled it on the same basic licensing ordinance that we used and was approved last year.
I know we discussed this at several work sessions and our work retreat, but I know you just got this this afternoon, so I'm okay if you want to wait till Tuesday to vote on it.
I got a couple
I'd like some time.
Yeah.
I do, too.
Yeah. Does this change anything as far as from ag to commercial or
This does not concern zoning at all. So any changes to the zoning ordinance or anything, this does not concern zoning at all. So as you know, the planning commission was considering zoning ordinance change where they were looking at, or staff had recommended a possible moving special event venue from ag to commercial. And the planning commission wants to table that for a month or two, to, so that they can review that and maybe craft some recommendations and other things for the Board of Commissioners' consideration. So they have recommended that the Board of Commissioners do a moratorium on any more conditional use permits for special event venues in the agricultural zoning district at this time. So that will be before the Board of Commissioners in the zoning session of the regular meeting next Tuesday. But this does not affect zoning at all, no matter what zoning district. And again, it doesn't, it doesn't limit or special event venues in any certain district or anything. It regulates wherever a special event venue is in any zoning district in the county that's operating, they would all be required to be licensed, inspected, and to follow the ordinances. And if they don't, then their license would be pulled.
So one question on the front end of all that. What if they don't? In other words, what if an event occurs and occurs and occurs, and they don't have a permit? What happens? It's one thing to talk about, well, if you did get a permit and then you're too loud or there's traffic problems or whatever. But what about on the front end where they don't even get a permit?
So obviously, we don't have a licensing system now. So just like we did with short-term rentals and Airbnbs, Community Development would notify all the existing special event venues, give them time to get in compliance over a number of months. It wouldn't be anything that all of a sudden they have to immediately comply. But we give them a certain timeframe to get in compliance with the new ordinance. And then once they are, they're going to be required to have a license. And if they're operating without a license for a special event venue facility, then they're in violation of our ordinances, and they would be cited and taken to magistrate court with a citation.
Okay. So it's a magistrate court process then?
Yes.
So this starts out a little more like farm wire, is now?
Very similar, yes.
Okay. Does it address, I mean, these places, I'll talk to you in private about this.
Okay, Ken, we will discuss this again on Tuesday, since it will not be on a consent agenda. So any questions you may have, you can direct towards Avery or plan to bring with you for Tuesday night. Thank you, Avery. We now have eleven point fourteen, no, eleven point sixteen, eleven point seven, oh, excuse me, eleven point sixteen is the city of Villarica Tax Allocation District. And I'll turn this over to Commissioner Chance at this point.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We are continuing to try to negotiate with the city of Villarica. They have recently passed a negotiation at their last city council meeting back to us. I'm continuing to try to review that. So as the chairman and working with our, not only our legal team, but our professionals that we have hired to try to assist us through this process. So I hope to have more information coming up on Tuesday. I would remind the district commissioners, if you have any thoughts, questions, please direct those to myself or the chairman so we can make sure that we are all trying to look at this negotiation together as we work through all the different partners in this process.
Thank you, Commissioner Chance. I'm going to bring up our fire chief once again to talk about our fire rescue uniforms and a contract that we need to approve.
Okay, thank you, once again. So in the amendment from April, we asked for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to revamp our uniforms. We have currently, we were renting our uniforms from Centos, and the service is not that great. And so we want to buy our uniforms and then moving forward, have a certain setup online that we can have an allocated amount for them to buy their uniforms yearly. So that, we put the bid out. A majority of what we want to award to Centos is a majority of the shirts and pants and stuff like that. We would like to kind of, because all the bids that we got back, some were for just shoes, some were for not the uniforms we're looking for, and one was a little bit overpriced from another local vendor in Marietta. So we wanted to award the majority of it to galls. That way, we can get the online setup and get that going, and they can have somebody come and meet us and measure our people and get these uniforms going.
Do y'all have any questions for Chief Barnwell?
And so you've obviously got some processes in place that if you've got somebody coming in that's five foot eleven, and then someone that leaves and a new person coming in six foot four, you know, where you're able to have some things that there's not a massive turnaround time to get them the equipment that they need.
We have a lot of, and this is just for these type uniforms. This is not for turnout gear. That is a completely different animal in itself. The system that we have right now is we try to fit them in some of the old stuff that we have in the warehouse. And sometimes we can, and sometimes we can't. Sometimes it looks good, sometimes it doesn't. We've got mismatched uniforms. We've got people with collar brass like mine. We want our line personnel to have on sewn-on patches. We have some that have the sewn-on patches, some have collar brass, some have this patch, some have the patch from before. So we put them in what we can, and, you know, to get Centos to bring those uniforms in and stuff like that, it's, it's, ever since I got there, I've been looking for a different way.
But that's my point. This hopefully is going to help us move forward in a better direction.
Absolutely. Yeah, this is more streamlined. It's more, it's more user-friendly, so to speak. And we can get our people looking right.
Commissioners, are y'all good with putting this on a consent agenda?
Yeah.
Here.
Great. All right. So let me just take a quick moment, because I know we have another meeting following this with Community Development. Let me go over the agenda because we did add some things here and make sure we're all on the same page, what's going to be consent and what's not going to be consent. So going over next Tuesday. All right. So under the financial session, we'll have ten one and ten two and ten point two A. And y'all realize these numbers will change. All of those will be to vote on Tuesday night. Ten three, which is public works equipment purchase.
Wait, wait, wait. I thought you said ten one was not on the consent agenda.
Correct. Ten one, ten two, and ten point two A, we will vote on Tuesday night.
Okay, all right, I got you.
Okay. Ten point three, which is public works equipment purchase. Ten point four, which is fire rescue, fire rescue equipment of two Stutford fire trucks, pumpers. At ten point four A is another ladder truck, and ten point five for fire rescue is equipment purchase. Ten point six, which is an investment agreement with Raymond James. Ten point seven and ten point eight, both library MOUs. All of those will be consent agenda under the finance. So we will only have three items to vote on Tuesday night under finance. Under the business session, we have eleven one, library board. Eleven two is to the Development Authority for Appointment District Five. Eleven three, the Region Four EMS Council Appointment. Eleven four, the Carroll County Board of Family and Children's Services Appointment. Eleven five, the Pathway Center Community Service Board Appointment. Eleven six, which is the inmate work detail agreement with the city of Carrollton with a change from three years to a one-year term commitment. Eleven seven is the fire service agreement with the city of Carrollton. Eleven eight is appraisal services for residential property. Eleven nine is the emergency medical services agreement with West Georgia Ambulance, also to include the name of the authority that Steve has sent in his letter. And then eleven twelve, which is the transit contract renewal. And then eleven seventeen, fire rescue uniforms. All of those are consent. So under the business session on Tuesday, we will not be doing solid waste. Those will be moved to a future agenda. We will have a public hearing for the abandonment of point five-four miles of Oak Shade Road, and we will have a resolution for the abandonment of point five-four miles of Oak Shade Road. We will discuss if necessary and vote for sure on licensing and regulation of special events facilities. And there may be further discussion and possibly a vote on the city of Villarica's TAD allocation district. So Diane, did I cover everything for the notes? Stacy, did I get everything? And Commissioners, are you comfortable with the agenda that will be resent out again tomorrow afternoon?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll see you in here in then. We will now adjourn our meeting. Thank you very much.